Hey, hey, hey.
Good.
Hey, hey.
Welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, February 24th, 2020.
First, we'll start off with the acceptance of the minutes of the meeting from February 10th, 2020.
I'd like to make a motion, but before that, I would like to make a change, a change for the minutes. It says, I'll draw one.
Right here.
Anyway, yeah. Okay. It says, Mr. Maroney, Mr. Mahoney updated the committee on that. Like to insert the socio-vote tech after Mr. Mahoney's name to indicate that who we were referencing.
I agree.
So I'd like to make that.
I agree with that as well.
Okay. And then at that case, I'd make a motion that we accept it with the modification.
I second with the modification.
All those in favor with the modification?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to our audience. Am I skipping or am I moving up?
They're not even.
I'm very quick.
Okay.
If you.
So I'm gonna go right over audience and go.
They're under reports, right?
They are. That's why I was trying to figure out where we were going.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll move on to then superintendent's report, Dr. Cron.
Excellent. Thank you. So I just wanted everyone to know, I know I announced at the last meeting that Beth Bond has announced her retirement and that we are starting the search process for a replacement for Ms. Bond. The first meeting of the hiring committee will now be on March 10th at 3:00 PM, and I just wanted to announce that. I wanted to also remind the public that once your son or daughter arrives at school, whether they're being dropped off by you in a car or they're being picked up by a school bus, they are not to leave school grounds after they arrive. So what's happening is a few hungry souls in the morning are getting off the bus and they're walking up to the food store and they're getting some snacks before school. They're not doing anything wrong. In fact, I've heard that their behavior in the store is impeccable. They're very polite and happy, but the fact is, once you step on that school bus or you step foot on school property and leave your parents, we become your parents by law. And therefore, in order for you to leave school property, you need an administrator's permission. So I'm not trying to make things difficult for people. It's a school safety issue, but we just want to make sure. And to be, to be very frank, we're most concerned with our fifth and sixth graders who are coming off the school bus, and we don't want them wandering up to the store before school. So parents, if you could have a conversation with your children about that, if you think they may be one of our snack seekers in the morning, we would appreciate that. We do have staff in place to remind the students that they're not to leave school property, but I'm sure we have some industrious souls who will find ways to meander through the building and, and, and find an exit, but we, we would like you to stay on school property once you arrive. Please, thank you. Reminder, there is no school one week from tomorrow, Tuesday, March 3rd, because of the presidential primary election, and that's something we made a change on a couple of months ago, but just want to remind everyone because it's different than the original school calendar. There is no school on Tuesday, March 3rd because of the presidential primary election. And that's all I have.
One quick thing. Is that in, that language in the handbook for the middle school?
That language is in the handbook for the middle school, and it's not in the language for the high school, but we're gonna add it this year. So that is in the school handbook for the middle school.
All right.
Yep.
Has a memo gone out to the parents?
Yes.
Email?
Yes. I sent the email on, on Friday, right, right before break.
Correct. I just wanted to add that because of the March 3rd day next week, and then the one snow day we had, that the last day of school is June 15th right now, unless we get more, there's no wood for me to knock on, but I keep getting asked that question right now. It's June 15th, and that is because we had to push it one more day because of the voting day next week. Okay? All set from there?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Cron. Nothing under communications. We'll head to reports. We have financial reports for January, the school department, the high school student activities, middle school student activities, cafeteria, and the daycare.
Five motions. Launching.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now we'll get on to Jefferson's Grade One students and teachers for curriculum corner.
Just wanted to, we have quite a big audience of Grade One students ready to show off for you, but before we begin, I wanted to introduce my Grade One teachers, Wendy Caprio, Denise Creedon, Molly Mansfield, and our speech and language pathologist Lauren Parker, who have done phenomenal work this year with phonemic awareness and wanted to show you some sampling of the new program, Haggerty Phonemic Awareness, that we have purchased for kindergarten and first grade across the district.
So hi, my name is Mrs. Caprio, and I'm a first grade teacher at Jefferson, and we're here tonight with our wonderful firsties. They're so excited to show off all they know about phonemic awareness and along with my team, my colleagues and really great friends, Mrs. Parker, she does speech and language, and then Ms. Mansfield, and Ms. Creedon. And Ms. Creedon and Ms. Mansfield will be doing some drills with the kids, and we hope that you can join in and try some out with us tonight because it's gonna be so much fun. So phonemic awareness is just a small part of learning how to read, and if you're phonemically aware, then you become a very accurate reader, which leads to fluency and comprehension. And if you have all of that, then you have language comprehension, and it intertwines, and you can become a skilled reader. And that's the science of reading, which is so complex, and, but it's very interesting, and we just, our team totally embraces the science of reading, and we find it very important that we carve out a small part of our day to do drills on phonemic awareness, and we've seen huge gains in the data with doing it this year. So we're really excited about it, and the kids are going to, you guys wanna introduce yourselves? You can come up here, say your name, and then we'll sit down and start the drills.
Oh, come on.
Yeah, I'll do the sides when they sit down.
No, you're still.
All right, so they, you wanna wait for a minute? Okay. So we have a few slides because they're a little nervous, and then we'll get them over there if they don't wanna introduce themselves. So a lot of people are like, what is phonemic awareness? And you take a look at the first slide, phonemic awareness is the understanding that spoken words are made up of individual sounds, which are called phonemes, and a child who is phonemically aware is able to isolate sounds, manipulate the sounds, blend and segment sounds into spoken and written words. The best part of phonemic awareness is if you lose power, you can do it in the dark. It's awesome, and that's happened a few times. So it's all auditory. You don't need pencils or books or anything like that. It's all auditory and listening, so that's the cool part. And if we go back just one more, it's okay. So it involves segmenting, pulling words apart, blending, putting word, sounds back together, and manipulating and deleting and substituting sounds. You wanna talk a little bit more?
Sure, yeah. And so not only do we just embrace this and love it and love the things that it teaches our students, but we also use the most current research. And the most current research that's been put out by the National Reading Panel, which governs us across the country, really talks about how children, you know, in kindergarten, first grade, all the way up through sixth grade, and the most of whom can be dislabeled readers, children across various SES levels, and children learning to read in English as well as other language, that this is the most important skill to teach. So it's really important to us that we include that into our curriculum. And again, that was backed by over, gosh, the National Reading Panel had at least 50 studies, and there's been more and more since then. There are many studies to back up this research. The two best predictors of early reading success are alphabet recognition, which we're all familiar with, and the phonemic awareness, which is more of the sound system. So it's taking the sound apart from the letter. So again, you can do it with your eyes shut, you can do it in the dark. It's really getting that sound system ready for, for language. And these are the skills we're gonna show today, and these are what we've been working on so far in first grade.
Right?
Yeah. So we'll get a little sample.
Yeah. If they don't wanna introduce themselves.
You wanna just move yourself over this way?
Yeah.
You're so.
Hi.
Remember that you got to be so rose free?
Right?
Right?
Yeah.
There you go. There's a bell, that's party. Right there, friend, you wanna sit right here? Hi. You wanna sit here, my goodness. Oh, and please participate.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah, my good baby.
You guys remember your snacks, remember your cup of that?
I thought I was not asking.
So the first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give you three words, and you're gonna tell me the first sound of your three words. Okay? So good listening. My first word, okay? Cab, cube, cat. Go, get, gone. Kit, kiss, kind. On, off, olives. See, sat, so. Ever, excel, end. Last, low, lie. Ice, idea, Isaac. Tie, take, tom. All right. All right, now, boys and girls, we're gonna blend some sounds. Are you ready? Choppers up. Cha, cha, cha. Cha. Here we go. Ugh. Good. Ugh. U, eh, de. Lid. P, ah, de. Pad. U, eh, k, weak. M, o, z. Nose. S, ah, b. Sog. E, de. Feed. U, eh, k. Lake. Good job, last one. U. M. Fume.
Okay.
Very good. Okay?
All right. So I'm gonna say a word, and then you'll say it back to me, and make sure you use roll caution from the middle sound. You ready? All right, so the word is bats. Bats. Is that a long A or a short A? Short. Kid. Kid. Long or short A? Short. Doug. Doug. Short. Okay, my next one is let. L, et. Short. And one more, job. Job. Short. Excellent, Doug. No short. All right, my friends, now we're gonna be segmenting our sounds. Are you ready? Choppers up. Cha, cha, cha. All right, now it's your turn. Ready? Hug. Hug. Hugs. Lid. 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 Pad. Pad. Well. Well. Nose. 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 Sob. Sob. Feed. 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 Good, one more. Fume. 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 Next one. All right, so our next one is.
I have a question. All right, you were telling me all these short sounds, but you're telling me these long sounds, like fee. Go ahead.
Do the word time.
Huh? Fee?
Oh, how about, okay, how about you wanna try another one? Do you wanna try the word time? Okay, so chop, time. T. Eye. What kind of an eye did you hear in time? Long.
Thank you.
We have a list with all four. We follow the list. Okay, so the next thing we're going to do is I'm gonna say a word, and you're gonna say it after me, and then we're gonna change part. Okay? All right, so my word is puck. Puck. Change puck to de. Duck. Duck. Change de to buk. Lock. Buck. Buck. Change buk to ul. Lock. 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 Change ul to t. Tuck. Excellent. Tuck. Tuck. Change t to yuck. Yuck. Good. Rug. Rug. Change r to buk. Bug. 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 Change buk to hu. Hu. Next. All right, friends, our last skill, we're gonna be changing the sounds of it. So I'm gonna give you a sound, you're gonna echo it to the onset sound, then we're gonna add a rhyme. You ready? Ock. Ock. Add er. Rock. In. In. Add p. Pin. Up. Up. Add k. Cup. It. It. Add s. Sit. At. At. Add buk. Bat. Eel. Eel. Add s. Feel. Ear. Ear. Add here. Each. Each. Add peach. Ease. Ease. Add tease. All right, last one. Eight. Eight. Add de. Date. Good job.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, first graders. You did a great job. And that was just an example of Haggerty phonemic awareness that all our K-1 classrooms are doing this year, and we're adding second grade as well to some of the struggling learners as well, so.
Yeah, it seems like it's working really well.
Yeah.
One more quick.
Yes.
They always go quick.
Yes.
Did you mention that you could, you could do this for foreign languages too?
Uh, no. We, we, we do it with, you know, we just do.
Right, you know.
I don't know if you, you probably could, but, but not with, but we can do it with, we can do it with no power, we can, like, as you can see, it's all auditory.
But what I'm saying is that making those sounds, like if you're trying to learn a foreign language.
You could.
Have some different sounds that would go along with that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, boys and girls.
There you go, really good job. The other thing, too, is that movement. You can't fall asleep doing that.
So one of the mothers. I saw that. Same with the meat raffle. They thought they were gonna make. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's. Ready? My brother played.
All right. On to old business. We're gonna move on to completed fundraisers. Boys Basketball did a SNAP fundraiser. They earned $5,200. Service Learning did a bake and bracelet sale. They earned $276.50. Rockland High School Hockey Boosters did a meat raffle. They earned $3,889. And the High School Hockey Boosters canceled their LCR tournament, but I think I read in here they were moving it.
Yeah, they're gonna do it in the fall.
To the fall. So those are all completed. Awesome job. That's a lot of money raised. Hard work. Congratulations on those. Request for approval for the 2020, 2021 school calendar, the second reading.
No changes?
No changes.
No changes?
No. No feedback from the public.
I will say, this was released online.
It was taken down.
Posted online.
Yeah, it was posted online.
As proposed.
Yeah.
So that people could review it.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying somebody, a PAC took it on Facebook and posted it as it was gospel.
Let's change it, then.
It was taken down from the PAC.
Yeah.
And they posted back up that they didn't realize it wasn't voted on, so it's all set.
Thank you. A second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And moving on to the request for approval for the 2020, 2021 Program of Studies, second reading.
Motion to accept. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Cron, you're okay with that as well?
Yes, I am, absolutely.
Thank you. And going on to the budget update. That's Dr. Cron.
So this is something that I'd like to keep on the agenda pretty much now through the end of the year, will just keep you informed as to the things that we're doing to prepare the budget, the conversations we're having and work that we're doing. So first, we held a meeting, we, we actually hosted about five people from Weymouth who came over, their English Language Learner Department came over because they've been experiencing growth in their ELL program quicker than we have, and we thought we may be able to learn some things from them. So we invited them over. We had a great meeting. We brought our staff together with theirs. We talked about best practices. We talked about some of the things that they had done that they wished they hadn't done, some of the things that they'd done they were pleased with. We left the meeting feeling very good about what we're doing, which was a surprise because we're, you know, you're always trial and error trying things, but we feel very good about our service delivery plan and our staffing levels, and so it was a very good meeting. It was a very good use of time.
Great idea.
We're, we're in regular communication with Town Hall about the budget, either Jane or myself. Jane attended some training on circuit breaker and transportation reimbursement so that we are, make sure that we're on top of collecting all of the funds that we should. I will say that one of the reasons that we are one of the 35 towns in this, in the state to receive over 1.5 million in new chapter 70 is because our data collection systems are so efficient. So I'm suspecting that other towns may not be capturing their data as accurately, at least that's what we've been told.
Right.
When we've been out. So again, kudos to Jane and, and to the office for doing.
Congratulations.
Good work gathering, gathering accurate data and providing it to DESI. Continuing to discuss with the leadership team, the best way to use our, you know, compliance positions, we're continuing those discussions, and I'll have a recommendation for you shortly on that. And we continue to review the reporting requirements for the Student Opportunities Act. So again, for those in TV land, the Student Opportunities Act was, was signed by the governor, I wanna say February, beginning of February. It resulted in, in serious reform to the funding formulas for towns, and Rockland is a major beneficiary of this change in legislation to the tune of an additional $1.6 million this year. So Rockland is, is doing very well with that, but along with that money comes some requirements. So I just wanted to point out, it requires us to submit a three-year evidence-based plan by April 1st, and we have to address these four areas outlined in the law. Evidence-based programs, we intend to implement to effectively reduce disparities among student subgroups. We need to make connections between how we're spending that additional money and the programs that we're using and how we intend to close the gaps that exist between our English language learners, our low-income students, and our, and our regular education students. Also, we have to establish targets and measurements for addressing persistent disparities and achievement gaps. We have to identify exactly what data are we gonna use to show whether or not we're succeeding. We need to specify our ongoing plans for engaging families and measuring family engagement effort. So I will say I plan to use the site councils because they already exist in each of the schools. I also plan to use the English Language Learner Parent Group that is formed. So unfortunately, their meetings, their next meetings aren't until after this plan is due, but I'm sure I'll be able to get feedback from them. But part of it is getting feedback from the parents. The department established a template, and they essentially want us to have four main commitments. They want us to focus on student subgroups, adopt, deepen, or continue specific evidence-based programs to close opportunity and achievement gaps. They want us to monitor, and they want us to engage families. I feel very confident that we are doing these things exceptionally well already, but I look forward to feedback from the state. But this, these are the things that the state is asking. They're giving us more money, and they're asking for accountability measures. They wanna know how we're gonna spend the money.
Right.
So it's very reasonable.
Right.
And I just wanted to update you on that, and I'll keep you posted as we go along. And again, we'll keep this on every single meeting, so anything that's new with the budget, I will let you know.
Well, as we've seen in the budget, you've targeted a lot of these things.
Absolutely.
With, with monies coming from the state in this new formula, and.
Yeah.
Right.
So now I, I think it's great. It's great.
Yeah. And I will say, this, this increase in chapter 70 from the state is good for the town, not just schools. This act was aimed directly at schools. Chapter 70 money is generated by students. So that, on October 1st, when we count everybody in our, in our district, that's the number that is used to calculate, you know, chapter 70 state aid. We have a relationship with the town, and we have the 70-30 split, and so it's, it's a good thing for the town as well. There's also some additional funding that's coming in, in the way of transportation reimbursement. You wanna say a few words about that?
Correct, yeah, which is pretty exciting. And the circuit breaker program, that was the training we went to today. Sorry, I find weird things exciting.
I know, that is exciting for you. Sorry, I giggle.
The circuit breaker program has been expanded to include reimbursement for out-of-district transportation. It's gonna start, a percentage basis very similar to the money that the town's receiving on the charter school reimbursement. The first year, we're going to get 25%. We will get 75% of 25% of our transportation costs. And then the next year, we'll get 75% of 50%, and then the third year, 75 of 75, and then 75 of 100. So it's going up in increments, and I'm hoping that I'll be able to help generate the actual formula that they're going to use for districts that are providing their own transportation to students out of district.
Right.
Because how we're gonna capture and prorate the cost of our leases for our vehicles, our insurance for our vehicles, our drivers' salaries, we don't wanna, we've saved a lot of money for this district going in that route, and we don't wanna lose reimbursement just because we've saved money.
Right.
And not only get reimbursement for our contractual piece, I wanna get.
Everything.
A piece of what we're doing in-house, so savings, compounding on savings within transportation. And so there were seven or eight other districts in the training that I went to today. It was great because they had both, they had the PPS folks, transportation folks, and business administrators sort of in the same room talking, talking about this. And there are seven or eight other districts on the South Shore that are doing similar[1583.91]
Right.
And not only get reimbursement for our contractual piece, I want to get.
Everything.
A piece of what we're doing in-house. So savings compounding on savings.
Excellent.
Within transportation. So there were seven or eight other districts in the training that I went to today, it was great because they had both, they had the PPS folks, transportation folks, and business administrators sort of in the same room, talking, talking about this. And there are seven or eight other districts on the South Shore that are doing similar things to what we're doing within-house. So we're going to form a little working group and try to help the state come up with a formula for, because we'll have to file for this, this June, for the, for our costs.
Right.
It's an additional, you know, it's an additional possibility for reimbursement.
Well, this money goes directly to the town though.
No, this money goes directly to the circuit breaker program.
To the circuit breaker.
To the circuit, to our fund, to our circuit breaker fund, which is the same for, that we get reimbursed for our out-of-district transportation. And not positive, but if we're, we may be filing for emergency relief this year, meaning that our sped costs are X percent higher than they were last year and they, when we looked at it two weeks ago, we were under, but now they're saying, hey, why don't you throw your transportation figures in there and maybe we'll let you tilt that balance? So I'd rather get the money earlier rather than later next year, so when I get back next week, that's what I'll look at.
Okay. Very exciting, I know. Good job, Jane, thank you very much.
And I would like to just say on Dr. Cron's comment about the categorizing of folks that Sarah Halagitis has been phenomenal.
Right.
And helping that, and Winnie in her office as well, and our entire staff in the offices worked really hard on all of that, so.
So thank you all very much.
Great group.
All set? All set.
Okay. On to new business with the request for the approval of, for the date change for the school committee meeting of Monday, May 11th to Tuesday, May 12th. And that is because the Jefferson School was awarded the School of Recognition by Massachusetts' Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and is, the award ceremony is in Worcester on May 11th. We said this at our last meeting, I just wanted to recapture that. So that's why we were trying to move our meeting so that we could attend that award ceremony.
They said four, but we're going to cheat.
Right online, you're telling all.
We're going to bring more.
Don't cheat anywhere else.
Just saying, I'm sure someone from the department is tuning in, but Rockland is going to bring five people.
You can get the five people.
Yeah, and if anyone gets thrown out, I'll duck out.
So if I showed up, you'd throw me out.
That's right.
Well, leave politely, don't embarrass the rest of us that are going to stay.
Move my ratings or something like that.
Okay, so do we have a motion to move the meeting from May 11th to May 12th?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then on to personnel information, any comments, Dr. Cron?
Just one, obviously, Principal Bonds' retirement is listed in this. She is one of a kind and will be missed and has had a profound effect on the school, but we will have plenty of time to embarrass her and sing her praises between now and the end of the year, but she is listed on this report and I think it's important to acknowledge that.
I agree with you. She has done certainly tremendous things for us in this.
Thirty-four years.
I think thirty, I heard, thirty-four.
She's been principal for 10, I believe.
Right. So outstanding work. Okay, and then on to our public service announcements. So Mrs. Davidson?
I was offered today, well asked today by a second grade, a third grade teacher at Jefferson if I would come in for a Read Across America Day on Monday, March 2nd, so I'm going to do that next week and I'm looking forward to it.
Exciting. And that's it? It's you? What is that?
That's my phone.
I was like.
I got a message or something, I don't know. I have no idea. It does that all day long.
Seems to me there was something about money when that happened.
Okay, I'll take that.
Alright, alright.
I'm like, do we lean something? Mr. Mills, you're next.
The other thing, you know, vacation, I think, I know I had a wonderful vacation last week and it was nice weather and stuff like that. About 60 days left in the school year?
That's crazy.
It's moving, moving, you know.
Fast, fast, fast.
And, you know, we got another vacation week, we got a couple of days off here and there. We got April 5th off too, right?
April 6th.
Good Friday.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So, and so it just gives you, just keep at it. Got a lot of things to do to get through the rest of the year and it's not, none of the times that, okay, summer's here, no it's not. Keep going. Doing the same thing in my house.
Mr. Phelps?
Tournament time. Basketball, girls, boys, phenomenal year they've had, just phenomenal. And I've had the opportunity to go to a lot of the girls and a lot of the boys, home games and it's, they're really spectacular.